Okay, it is seven oh three P M on February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. I'm gonna start with a roll call, just go right down. Uh trustee sour.
Here.
Trustee alter.
I'm here.
Trustee Hanson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Shudding.
Here.
Mayor Allen is present, absent is trustee Walried, who is under the weather. And our village clerk and village attorney are also absent today. We also have with us, uh, Tad from Delaware Engineering. So welcome, thank you, we'll be getting to your stuff very, very soon.
Thank you.
Uh, first item, uh, up to bid, or up to bid, I don't know why I'm auctioning things. Um, is, uh, the community service sentencing coordinator. We went properly through civil service finally, and you're getting this process right. Uh, send them the job duties in the description. They, um, had their civil service commission meeting on Tuesday. Bobby Ryan was able to go down, uh, and meet all of the nice ladies down there. And it was approved, and we had actually called it the civil service. Or not, sorry, we called it the community service coordinator.
Coordinator.
They have similar job postings that are more community event driven.
Yes.
Community service coordinator, so that's why we're calling it the community service sentencing coordinator.
They were not to be related, so it, so it, so it signifies it was coming from a court order. You know, that's what they were trying to do.
Yeah. Uh, so, um, we are ready to appoint, if, uh, that is good with you guys, the first resolution in your packet.
And I think, didn't Jerry used to do this before, right?
Oh, yes, he did. Oh, he's all in, yeah, yeah.
He's got a long history. He's got a long history.
He's chomping at the bit.
And I will tell you.
It stopped because of COVID.
As great as it is to have him back and knowing that the court will have the community service available. Knowing what he does individually with people, it's so, so, it just, it just makes me so happy that we're, we're getting this service back and he's willing. So I'm so, so grateful for him. So a resolution appointing a community service sentencing coordinator, I'm just gonna skip down to the bottom. Um, now therefore be resolved by the board trustees of the village of Huesick Falls in regular session, the meeting follows one. Village of Huesick Falls Board of Trustees hereby appoints Jerry McColl Jr. as the community service sentencing coordinator for the village of Huesick Falls effective March third, twenty twenty five, that's just Monday. Uh, and this appointment is part time on an as needed basis with such maximum hours of work per week not to exceed twenty hours, to be paid twenty dollars per hour. So first off, I need someone to offer the resolution.
Move.
Second.
All right, um, I'll say trustee Hanselman. All right, um, uh, and then, um, deputy mayor. Any question, discussion?
Just, uh, not to exceed twenty hours per week. If, if there's times when there's only ten hours, you might have some flexibility to do more hours to follow in a week. I, I don't know, that seems very rigid as a.
He, he typically said that he's only gonna, he typically isn't like eight, eight hours a week. There may be a little bit of ebb and flow, but he said it never exceeds twenty, so he was content.
We, we have a timesheet system for that?
Uh, yes.
And he'll be on that, he'll actually be on our.
He, yeah, we'll have to add.
He should be on the paychecks, then, yes.
Yes, yeah. All right, uh, any other questions?
Just, it, does the, does the community service come out of county court, or can we do it right here in village court?
No, no, it's only village court.
It's just village court, this is only for village court.
Oh, okay, only village court.
Yeah, not even town court, even though we share justices.
Only village court.
That's in the county program.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what the, that's what the sheriff's department takes care of that, right?
This is.
The sheriff's department takes care of the county, doesn't it?
Yeah, you get the independent.
Yeah.
Yeah, R T I, or, or what is it, or A T, alternative to incarceration or whatever, really do, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
But this is, this will be just village court, even if the county wanted to use it, we don't have any, ever had a setup where the county would be working with us for that. So that would be a separate approach.
Great idea.
Yeah, all right, uh, roll call vote, trustee alter.
I mean, yes.
Trustee Hanselman.
Yes.
Trustee Shudding.
Yes.
Trustee sour.
Yes.
Um, trustee Walried is absent, uh, deputy mayor, uh, Ryan.
Yes.
And I am a yes, so it passes, it passes. All right, on to item number two, we are talking water treatment plant, U V filtration upgrade project with Delaware Engineering and Tad. Um, we, uh, had already had the bid openings, we knew we had to take a little bit of time and get the, um, bond resolution, um, uh, uh, redone, which we did. And that has progressed as, as normal. I know that, um, Delaware reached out, I think it was Robert who reached out and made sure that the bids would hold longer than the initial forty five day hearing.
Yeah, my understanding was that, um, the contractors agreed to hold their pricing.
Yep.
Um, since it was past the forty five days.
Yep. Yep, and they did. Um, just as a reminder, this was the letter we got, um, about the bids. Total of five bids received for the general contracts and four for the electric contracts. The bid tabulations are below, but the recommendation, which are the lower bids, are, uh, C F I contracting for two point three eight million. And still seeing electric for the electric contract, two hundred and thirteen thousand. And just if you wanna see the bid tabulations, I know we've gone over this, oh, yeah, I can read that. Oh, no, that is the bid tabulations, yeah, that's, Dan, just put your face right up by the screen. Um, so trustees, any questions?
What's the lifespan of these systems, any idea?
The U V systems?
Yeah.
Um, well, I can tell you that I live in the village of Castleton. And we put one in our wastewater treatment plant fifteen, ten, it's at least ten years ago. Um, the bulbs have to be replaced from time to time.
Right.
And, and that's just a maintenance item. Um, we did an upgrade on that plant two years ago. And so we had the company come in, you know, the manufacturer's rep, and replace all the ballasts and whatnot. But the control panel and all that stayed the same, so it's, it's more of a, um, you end up with more of sort of an overhaul maintenance thing. Um, you know, which was, I, I don't remember honestly what the cost of the system was, but it was, you know, a sixty thousand dollar item to have them come in and basically, those things have wipers on the bulbs that, you know, are automated, they go back and clean them, clean them, time to time, and replace all them, replace all the bulbs, replace all the ballasts. Um, because they're ba, they're basically giant fluorescent lights, right?
That was about a decade down the road, you said, from the, from the.
Or maybe.
Ten years.
Ten years.
Ten, ten to fifteen years.
Before you had to invest any, any type of cost, like you're talking about the sixty thousand.
Aside, aside from replacing bulbs and, you know, just sort of merely.
What are bulbs, I mean, what kind of, like, what are we talking for?
I feel like we're getting extra bulbs as part of this.
You probably are.
I'm pretty sure that was in the, in the specs.
Probably getting spare, as spare parts.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not familiar with the, the project specifically, but, um,
Yeah.
that's typically we have, you're gonna get X number of.
Sure.
bulbs and a couple spare ballasts and, and anything that might fail, um, because of, you know, manufacturing flaw or something like that. So you have spare parts on hand.
Would you be able to give us some kind of, um, kind of maintenance schedule so we can project out costs for those three years, four years, or five years, so we don't get cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to, um, I'll talk to Anthony or Robert and get them to, um, I, I'm not, I don't even know what. Like I said, I'm not super.
Sure, right, right.
I don't know what manufacturer was, was bid, um.
Yeah, probably for us, it's just maybe annually putting money aside in reserve.
Well, yeah, right, right, yeah.
We need to start doing it.
It, it, there's, you know, you need to budget, obviously, in your, in your wastewater budget. And I don't, I don't believe it would have, I, I know in Castleton, um, you know, it didn't affect rates in the short term. Um, obviously, when we did a seven million dollar upgrade on their sewer plant, it affected rates. And my sewer costs went up.
And if I, if I'm understanding this correctly, when the, when the, after the water's treated and it goes to final discharge to the river, it's like, what, like ninety eight percent of bacterial solids are removed? And this kills the last remaining between one to two percent, right?
So typically, one of those is it takes the place of chlorine.
Right.
Um, when you're, when you're disin, you have to disin, you disinfect from May to November typically. And, um, so, of course, the old tried and true is chlorine, and then you have to dechlorinate too. So you've got chemical costs, and of course, you've got a cost of chemical you're dealing with, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, so the push to, to U V has been, it's been going on for fifteen years at least. Um, because you don't, you don't have the operators handling chemicals.
So, so we'll get a cost savings by, by chemical reduction?
Your, your chemical redu, chemical use will go down, you don't, I mean, if you're using, um, hypochlorite and sodium bisulfate or bisulfate for dechlor um, and chemical pumps and things like that, and tanks, storage tanks, you know, you don't need them anymore.
I don't think.
So it'll, it'll increase your electric cost some?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But, but you won't have chemical costs.
That's all right. And this is again, and this is a, a glorious unfunded mandate from the state, as they tend to be.
Is this, is this incoming or outgoing? Water or sewer?
It's sewer.
Sewer, oh, okay, I thought so.
It's being added in after the decantation process.
It's sewer, you do see U V on water systems sometimes?
Uh, the only reason I ask that was at the water plant today and, and the two chemicals you mentioned, sodium hypochlorite and, uh.
They, they had.
They, they had those also over there.
Yeah, they're using, and typically that's chlorated, um, if you don't dechlorinate drinking water, um, you have a certain residual, so it's actually a very low amount, and it needs a certain amount of contact time. If you, if you're in a water plant in the room where we're putting the dehumidifier, all the filters are in that room.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, under the floor, there are tanks and there's like a serpentine, there's a set of bunch of walls that, so the water goes through in a serpentine fashion because it has to have a certain amount of time with the contact with the chlorine, to make sure it kills off all the bacteria. Um, and then you end up with the residual of, of, a minimal residual in the system. Um, and your guys, your operators, you know, they have to sample at various points and they test for chlorine residual.
Yep.
To make sure it's getting out into the system and various parts. And the fun part in your water plant with the carbon filters you guys had to put in, that strips chlorine, so they have to run through those first and then chlorinate. So when they, they put those GAC filters in, they had to massive repiping.
Yep. Yep.
Were you involved at all with the balance tank over here?
No.
No, okay.
No, they finally got that done, well, almost done.
Almost done, yeah.
All right, um, any more questions? All right, um, so we have a resolution to, we have two resolutions. The first one is going to be to award, uh, bids for the wastewater treatment plant U V upgrades. We've kind of gone over the where as the contracts went out in October, we received the bids and had the bid opening on December twentieth. And we got the letter on December thirtieth from Delaware, uh, with the rec, uh, review of the bids and the recommendations. Um, now therefore be it resolved, uh, this village board in consideration foregoing one, uh, authorizes the award of the general contract, um, yes, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, contract one G to C F I contracting for the amount of two point three eight million. Authorizes the award of electric construction contract for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, contract one E to still seeing electric for the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand. And declares this resolution will take effect immediately, need someone to offer the resolution. Doug and then Dan, anyone second it?
Yeah, I think.
All right. Okay, uh, any further comments, questions?
Ouch.
Yeah, yeah.
Uncle, uncle.
The only thing I could say that would be based on, I, that's why I was curious what the heavy maintenance schedule was, because I think we have a little over ten years left on the bond on the water or the sewer plant to begin with, so, you know, if we don't need to put any heavy money into it in the first ten or twelve years. You know, it's like, I know I have to do a major repair on my house in eight years, but it's paid off at six, maybe I'll life a lot easier, right? So.
All right, any more questions, comments? Roll call vote, trustee alter.
Yeah.
Trustee Hanselman.
Yes.
Trustee Shudding.
Yes.
Trustee sour.
Yeah.
Uh, trustee Walried is absent, uh, Mayor Allen is a yes, deputy mayor Ryan is also a yes, so that passes fully. Uh, along the lines of this project, which is a twelve, uh, estimating a twelve month construction project. Uh, we also have a resolution that will amend the professional services agreement with Delaware Engineering, which originally was for a hundred and fifty thousand. And that scope covered design bid, which all happens. Uh, now we're looking at, um, amending it as we talked about last, uh, meeting or a couple meetings back, I think it was a special, I can't remember. Um, to add construction, um, um, observation services for two hundred thousand. No, it's a, it's like fifty thousand or a hundred and fifty, I forget which one's which. Construction administration, I think it's fifty thousand, deconstruction, um, observation is a hundred and fifty thousand, that changes the whole agreement to, uh, two hundred thousand more. So this, um, resolution would change the total agreement from the original hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. And that would get us all of the administration observation during the construction phase from beginning to end.
And let me, it is, that is not part of the two point.
No.
Okay, should I ask him?
But this is part of the overall, we anticipate these costs and we know there's grants coming and all the bond resolution is set to cover this.
Okay, that's all, I wanna make sure.
Did you bump the cable?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's very, very particular, anyway, you guys have it in front of you. Now therefore be resolved by the village board in consideration, all right. Peter, be weird. Remind me to tell you about the laptop in a minute, all right. Uh, now therefore be resolved, the village board in consideration foregoing one, oh, did I read this yet? No, okay, and one, uh, authorizes the execution of an amendment to the professional services agreement, increasing the agreement value by two hundred thousand for construction administration and construction observation services, bringing the total value to three hundred and fifty thousand. And then this resolution will take, uh, effect immediately. Send to offer the resolution. Thank you, Bobby. Uh, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, further discussion?
I, I just have a question, um, how much oversight does there need to be when this is being built? I mean, is it, is it?
Typically, um, on a project of this scope, we have someone on site full time.
Is it?
Almost full time. Um, you have, you're, you, so things like this are out of the scope of your building inspector.
Right, but why would we need somebody, you know, I, I assume they're working off of blueprints?
They're working off of prints, but there's, there's, there are special inspections that are required for inspecting the rebar and concrete. Um, actually expecting, being present with concrete pores and having the concrete tested. Um, and ensuring that the contract, keeping an eye on the contractor, making sure they're following the plans and doing things as specified.
We have, this is, for all of our project, this is a typical approach. And we did the, um, the most recent big one, which is the sewer infrastructure project, I think it was Dave Lucas, who, from M I B, who did a lot of the, uh, observation. And it's like you said, a lot of day to day, making sure everything's progressing the way it should, making sure things are being done the proper way. If a corner is caught or something simple is missed, then spending, you would spend three months.
And the other piece is, we actually, we use a program, are always, all our inspectors do, I actually have on my phone, it's a thing called Raken. Um, which is a cloud based program, but it's, they all have iPads. So they can take pictures as they go, they can take notes, who's on site, who's doing what, and all of that, and we have those for records.
Yeah.
Our, our senior.
That's fantastic.
Our senior construction manager actually can sit at his computer in the office or wherever he is. And if one of the inspectors gets a question, they can take pictures, he can go and look at the picture so he can get like real time view of what's going on.
That's very, very.
So it probably eliminates a lot of delays as well.
It eliminates delays and, and what it used to be is, you know, there was a form, you had a daily inspection report you filled out. And, you know, okay, there was, you know, six guys on site and they poured concrete, right, you wrote that down. Now you have pictures that go with it. Um, and then, so our administrative staff, they actually pull down the reports, you know, at every week or so. So they're there, um, so if there's, and, and so if there's any problem down the road, also, you know, where you've had concrete wall fails.
Yes.
You get a tank that leaks, or whatever, you've got some backup to say, well, this was done correctly.
It was constructed correctly, right?
This was not done correctly.
Right, right, right.
Um, cause you'll actually get contractors, any more contractors, and, and if any of you were contractors, I don't want to offend you.
No, no.
No one.
I know what you're gonna say, yeah.
But, you know, the best way I can put it is, you know, having worked for Delaware for twenty three years and we have our, um, you know, we're rehabbing plants that were built thirty years ago. And the whole plant was built on a thirty page set of plans, and we do a rehab and it's a hundred and fifty pages of plans. Because you have to have every little detail.
Yeah.
On paper.
Yeah.
Be, be, because otherwise they're gonna come back and say, well, I want, which they do anyways, I want more money.
Right.
They do, yep.
Or it doesn't tell me I have to do this, so I'm not doing, even though it's, even though it's good practice.
Now, does this price include if there are like E C Ps along the way, engineering change proposals type of a thing, or?
That, that will get, that will get handled, I, in, in terms of your bid price with your contractors, I'm sure there's allowances in there.
Okay.
There's gotta be a buffer left in there, right?
Yeah, there's contingency built into the cost.
Yeah, there's, there's an allowance, and then whoever's doing the construction administration and observation will be handling the, you know, any of that stuff. Any, any possible change orders.
Yep.
Coming down, um, and saying, you know, yes, this is necessary, or no, this is bullshit.
And, and that, no, that, that happens, the change orders are kind of a game, a lot of, I, I, I see this at school because schools are required to take the lowest bid. You get some really, really bad, um, players and they, all of a sudden, they have the lowest bid, but then they jack up the prices later with change orders.
Well, that's the first, there's, there's, but there's, there's something we know, you know, because we deal with a bunch of contractors, that, that's the first thing they're gonna do.
Yeah.
They're gonna go through the plans and they're gonna start work, and they're gonna come at you and say, here.
Yep.
You didn't, you know, here, you, you, is, we want another fifty grand. Um, and sometimes it's justified because we make mistakes at times, or there, or.
Unknowns.
Unknowns, especially when you're digging underground.
Uh, sewer projects.
Um, and, and typically how it's phrased for that allowance money is owner requested changes. So if there's something that you, you know, your operators want done.
Yeah.
That's wasn't specifically in the contract. There's the flexibility to say, okay, we can spend ten thousand dollars on this item. Um, and you don't have to go jump through hoops and refund, and then get into trouble with your financing and all of that stuff.
It's already in there.
You build that, like, you're holding it, it's a contingency, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I could, I could tell you with, for the, the, the water plant dehumidifier, I mean, it's a hundred and thirty three thousand plus contract. I've got a twenty thousand dollar allowance in that project. Right? So if there's some unknowns with the structural, because they've got a kind of door in the side of the building, um, I don't think there are.
Right.
But got money to cover that.
That's like, like a fifteen percent contingency or something like that?
Roughly, roughly, yeah.
All right.
So does that mean that if, if, I think that would be a hundred?
If, if they don't, if, if there's, one of the things I like, because I, I, I run smaller projects. Something on my own, I'm doing your dehumidifier project, um, I always like to go pull one back at the end. I get to write a negative change order.
Gotcha.
Oh.
And say, okay, that twenty grand, or, you know, we only use half of it, so ten is coming back out under contract.
That'd be nice.
Um.
I, I haven't seen one of those, so that's, really nice.
Well, I, I'll tell you what, Mayor, I, I'm gonna do my best to, and, and, and it depends on Jim too.
Yes, yep.
If Jim has a wish list, um, that, you know.
He will have a wish list.
It's like the Declaration of Independence.
Yeah.
More for and twenty years ago.
Yeah. All right, any others?
One, one last, how big of a structure are we talking about here? How big of a, uh?
Were we talking dehumidification?
No, 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 the, uh, U V thing, how big is a footprint on this thing?
Uh, it's.
Roughly.
You know where the decanters are, you know, the space between the big decanters and the fence.
Yeah.
It fits in between that, it's pretty large.
I'm just curious, how big of a?
Yeah, I haven't seen a plant like that in a while.
I didn't know if it was a little concrete block house or like some gigantic.
No.
Filtered factory.
I may be able to pull it up in a minute.
That's all right.
They put in channels.
Uh.
I don't know what the flows are in your plant, I could, like, I can tell you, Castleton is about a two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, that's what they're, they're rated for.
That's probably about where we're at, right? Cause that's about what we do in water.
What is it?
It's, it's like a.
Two hundred and fifty thousand gallons, I think?
It's like a twelve inch channel, and there's, there's a couple channels and there are two banks of lights in there.
Three hundred thousand, so my net size would be?
Um, and that's out in open channel, so we had to extend a tank about the space that's in between your cables here. And then the control panels and stuff are in, and exist a, a building they had.
Oh, gotcha.
Right, just conduits over.
That'll be our next dehumidification project, probably.
All right, um, any other discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote on the resolution for amending the engineering professional services, trustee alter. Trustee Hanselman.
Yes.
Trustee Shudding.
Yes.
Trustee sour.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Walried is absent, Mayor Allen is a yes, and deputy mayor Ryan.
Yes.
All right, passes. One more Delaware one, we're gonna switch gears to the dehumidification project, in which you are the lead on this, correct?
Yeah, I guess.
You are the, the, the reigning expert.
I know a lot more about this.
All right, so.
You don't wanna study sewer water?
We have the resolution, we're well aware of this, and even though, uh, Megan is sick and home, if we say no, she will come and murder us, I know this. Uh, so the bid, uh, the bids were, let's see, are open on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Um, you guys have reviewed the bids and the lowest bidder is the recommendation, uh, of which Delaware is recommending, uh, contract one B one, is it Flach?
Flack.
Flack, it is Flack, okay, Flack Industries. I, I should, I've heard of them, so I should have known that, I just saw it as Flach, and I was like, I don't think they would do that to their team.
You might know that they, they're also, they own Glen Davis Valve.
Okay.
So they've done some work for your, as Glen Davis Valve, they do water caps.
Oh.
And stuff like that, so they've done some work, you know, which you're, I know.
Yeah, okay. Now therefore be resolved, this village board in consideration foregoing hereby authorizes the award of the dehumidification project contract for the water treatment plant to Flack Industries of Southark, New York, at a total cost of a hundred and thirty three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, who would like to offer this resolution?
Megan.
Yeah, Megan, yeah, all right.
And Megan's ass.
Dan is going to offer it, um.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion or questions?
Sorry, I do have a question on this. When we were getting bids, I came down and the, the one, it was really nice, uh, he was an engineer with one of the companies that was giving a bid, and I had a long discussion with him about the humidity in there. Um, this is obviously gonna take a lot of water out of the air, which will stop some of the corrosion of the componentry and everything else, which is great. He also mentioned, though, that his opinion was a lot of the humidity was coming from, um, dripping off of the raw pipes, right? So some of them have already been covered with insulation and stuff like that. Um, should the, it, I mean, what's your opinion on getting the rest of the pipes wrapped? I'm assuming that's probably you.
I know, I, in, in conversations and meeting with, you know, meeting with Jim at the water plant, um, he's had more done fairly recently.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he, he wants to have some more done, I know he's talked about, he, there's some, for instance, there's some pipes, pipe stands, pipe supports.
Yeah.
That the, the, the base plates are rusting, um, because they're just carbon steel, um, he wants to get them fixed, um, at some point. That's, those are smaller items. The goal is with this in the design, so if you go into, at the plant, if you go into where your GAC filters are.
Mm-hmm.
There's a dehumid, unit that hangs way the hell up in the ceiling, right? And those tanks are dry.
Right.
Right to the touch. You go into the filter room where this project is gonna be.
It's brutal.
And the filters are just, there's just water running off them. And obviously, you've got, you know, you've got cold water and humidity, you've got condensation.
Right.
Right? Um, hopefully, the unit that I've specified for that room is almost as big as the one that's in where the GACs are. And it'll have ductwork that comes up, it'll sit on a stand on the floor.
Okay.
So they can access, so they're gonna be two feet off the floor, um, over in the corner of the room.
Cheaper to fix.
Easy, just walk right up to it, change the filters, you know, do whatever they want. Um, and ductwork to blow the, the dehumidified air out into the room. And also, um, right now the exhaust, so there's two exhaust fans in that space. And they, they run on a cooling thermostat only, right? So as the temperature goes up, they'll turn on. Um, in a water plant, obviously, you've got those filters, you, it stays cool in there because of the, the water temperature, right? So changing that, putting the fans on timer, so that they will run every hour. Or, you know, five minutes every hour, or whatever they choose to set it, the, it's a digital timer, they can do.
Adjust it based on the needs.
They did, there's fifty four, fif, I think it's fifty four or fifty six.
Yeah.
Incidences in a twenty four hour period, it's gonna be.
Oh, that's cool, yeah.
Um, so, so one of the things that will help with is in the winter time, it'll, it'll help get rid of the chlorines, some of the chlorine smell that's in there and, and, and obviously, it's, it's in the air because of the chemical room next to, next to it. And, um, It's in the air because of the chemical room next to next to it and, um. So it will help clear that out and by running it on a timer, what I've learned over time is that even in the winter time. You run, they never, they would never, those stands would never run in the winter, we're actually on the same control right now. You switch the control and it turns the heat on or it turns the fan on.
Oh.
So we're gonna separate that, so those stands will will turn on in the winter time too, but the only, if it only runs for five minutes. It doesn't cool the structure at all, it, you know, so the heat will kick back on and bring it back up to temperature in a few minutes. Um, but again, it will get that chlorine smell smell out of there somewhat and that will also help with any humidity. Because you're exhausting air out of that, out of that room on a regular basis, you're doing it twenty-four hours a day. So my hope is, you know, like. Guarantees there won't be a little bit of tiny, a little bit of condensation on those filters. Can't guarantee that.
Right, right.
But I believe that, um.
Not to the level it is now, where it's, yeah.
My my first visit there was last spring, right, May, something like that, and 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 just.
Eighty-seven percent humidity or something in there?
If your hands shake the water off your hand, they're drying it right now, um, because it's got heat on in there. But, um, this is a, physically, it's the same size unit as the one in the GAK room, yeah, um, it's just a. Um, the model's sl- slightly smaller, but it's it's he, it's basically a huge unit for that space. Um, so and and the difficulty was there's no way to get it into the space.
Yeah.
It literally, if you if you're familiar with that plant, there's the, you walk in that filter room and there's the walkway past the filters, right? The cabinet dimension is the exact same dimension as the edge of the filter to the wall. So in talking and and Jim was helpful with this, we're gonna, I'm gonna cut a door.
Yep.
Inside of a building.
On the far side.
On the back, on the back.
Yep, yep.
Where this thing goes in and we've gotta do a little bit of structural stuff, put a double, set of double doors in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then there's actually a wind brace for the building in there, so we'll have to cut that or turn buckle on. So they can drop the wind brace down, bring the unit in, so, but if they ever, if it ever has to be changed, you've got access.
Yeah, what means to get it out as well, right?
So the doors stay.
The doors stay.
That or something else it needs to come out at some point, right?
Right, so so there's a place, because originally it was like, we're gonna, we're gonna have to build the thing in. And apparently the one that's in the GAK room, they took apart and brought it in. When I talked to the the rep for, it's Stark is the the rep, um. And I told him that and I said, so have they, he's, I said, did these come apart? And he said, he said, apparently they took that one apart, don't tell me that. You're not supposed to take them apart, they're not designed to come apart. So you avoid the warning on the thing if they knew it came apart.
Which they have some secret way of telling, I'm sure.
Probably do.
That that project was done through the companies and I think CT Mail was the engineering firm behind that, so it does not surprise me in the slightest. That you're finding this information.
Yeah, so so, I mean, Jim Jim came to, I came to talk to him again and take some measurements one day and he said, what if we just cut a chunk of the siding out? And put the siding back? And I said, that's great, but it's they're insulated metal panels.
Yeah.
There's no neat way to do that.
Yeah.
Right? And I said, why don't we put seven old doors in like you have on the other side of the door? And then if it's gotta come out in fifteen years or whatever, you guys will replace it.
Take it out.
Yep.
You have to drop that brace.
It's like having a Bilco door.
Yeah, yeah, they can get your furnace, where your furnace breaks, you go on so many, you have to add a several doors, bringing it through the kitchen, right?
You go out the Bilco door. Right.
So.
I'll take the Bilco door.
You know, I mean, hot water heaters have walked through my house, the living room, dining room, down the awkward stairs.
Me too. Swearing and cussing all the way, crushing your fingers and doorways.
Oh, yeah.
So it's it's not a door they will use.
They can secure it for years, just.
It'll have to be secured and and it's not something they will use because it will have this steel rod across on an angle when everything's back together. But all they have to do is undo a turn buckle and drop that rod down and then they go access to it and go through.
Spent out.
With anything, so it was just, you know, I come from construction backgrounds and various jobs, I've had. About three different careers in my life.
Nice.
And and, um, I like to, you know, I I fix things, and so I like to make it easy to fix things too.
That's great, that's great, we uh, we like that.
We all own old houses here.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got a hundred plus year old house.
All of us do.
Yep. Alright, any other discussion questions?
No, thank you for the interest.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, uh, roll call vote, trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Hanselman?
Yes.
Trustee Shudding?
Yes.
Trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Walread is absent, Mayor Allen is a yes, Deputy Mayor Ryan is a yes, alright. Thank you, I'm gonna sign some documents with with pad right now, so while I do that, um, my computer's on the fritz yet again. Um, going to the discussion regarding the senior exemption. Um, I sent the email earlier that had the examples on what the threshold would be, um, yep. So I wanna throw these up on the board or on on the screen here just so you can see them. Um, these are the, uh, the twenty-five thousand threshold would, or nineteen houses would qualify. Um, the assessed value affected would be this number, so cut in half, means seniors would pay that number, we make up the other half. That's the com- comparison, so we estimated that twenty-five thousand would be an e- extra ten dollars on average. Uh, thirty thousand threshold would be thirty properties, um, with fifteen not forty-one. And then the original forty thousand, uh, threshold we were talking about was sixty-five properties with additional thirty-six. So why don't you guys kind of state your thoughts in peace while I uh, sign some documents with that here?
So I guess I have a question more about the.
Sure.
The local law aspect of this in that. Is there a way we could put it into the local law that it gets reeval, if we decide to go with a lower amount? Or actually, I think regardless of what you know, we decide to go to. If we, is there a way to do a local law that says this can be reevaluated every even year or every?
Subject can be ruled.
Yes.
Every, you know.
Yeah.
I think there is a mechanism for that and I know that Elena is, um.
No.
Very eager to redo the law completely because the previous law is already, it's so weird.
Rule.
Right.
You've neither hard code in the approach, like, um, this year it's twenty thousand, this year it's twenty-five or so on.
I think instead of putting an an amount every many years into the law, I think it would be better to say. This, whatever we decide for twenty twenty-five or whatever, that's what's put into place and is reevaluated on. An two-year basis or an even year basis, odd year basis, however.
And not committed, yeah, you're right.
And then we're not committed to an increase every year or two years? We look at where we stand.
I will send you what's your thoughts on indexing into the, you also see them in the morning.
Okay, great. What what I couldn't understand.
I said, what's your thoughts on indexing into the consumer price, that's about the rate of inflation. So just.
If we're obligating ourselves to increases and we don't know what we're doing.
Right, yeah, I I I I like the idea of us monitoring it, like you said, the first one's gonna take effect with twenty-six.
Right, and that gives us, and I think if we, if we labeled it to where, I mean, we obviously need the local law done regardless.
And what's my, if the resolution for the. Water plant project? Notice of a word of Flach.
Yeah.
So even if we, right, so even if we kept it at twenty-five, we still have to say, we're keeping it at twenty-five and whatever. To be reevaluated at this point for an increase of, but I just think instead of us locking ourselves into a guaranteed increase every so often.
It's currently fifteen, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be better to say we will reevaluate, because then if we're in a posi- a position where, I mean. I don't wanna say we go backwards, but. Go to backwards if we wanted to, rather than say, oh, yeah, nope, we have to go up another percent this year, another two percent.
You got, it's also based on, it's based on age and income, so.
Right.
Some people getting older, you know, and we might not have sixty-four people.
Right, we might not have more.
We might have more.
Right, they hide me, man.
I will.
Good to see you, Jim.
We might have more and then and then to set, like you said, just say, yeah, go ahead and make it start launch, I agree.
So Brett, to your point, I I don't think that we can say reevaluate in two years, because there'd have to be some sort of formal process to make a change. So I think.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Because it's just local law driven, because the local law is saying we're setting this number. Um, it's possible the local law can be drafted to say it can be changed in in a future year via resolution, I know Elena's done that before in other items.
Yes, we have, we have.
You have to have a resolution anyway.
Yes, yes, so I'll ask Elena about that.
I'm thinking something easier than like having to either rewrite a local law every two years.
We don't want a local law every two years, right, exactly.
Right, we don't wanna, right, that's that's what I'm trying to avoid, but, you know.
Sure.
I like that.
That's right.
You can modify it by resolution at in in biannually, you know, something like that.
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense, so that'll be the first thing. Um, I did talk to, uh, Tiffany again, um, we do have the option to do a different percentage exemption. It just ends up being a lot more work for her because both the school and the town county have a fifty percent. So there's a bunch of things that would have to change in the system, but I'm I'm very content with the seniors being a fifty percent discount.
Well, and it just makes it, it makes it an easier number because you just take what they're already paying, you cut it.
We do. Cut it in half, yeah, so we do have the option to change the percentage, we don't have to make it a fifty percent change. But these are the things that we just kind of collectively need to decide on, let me scroll back up so I can show you the, uh, thirty thousand number. And then I can also go up and show you the twenty, uh, the twenty-five.
I'm not opposed to the fifty percent exemption, I, this, the the threshold is what we gotta decide upon.
Yeah. Um.
Cause it is crazy that between thirty to forty, you add another thirty-five people.
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna as- assume that the average social security check per family is between thirty and forty, which is why you end up.
Yeah.
You're a jockey jumper.
That would make sense.
But the other caveat.
Uh, well, everything, all laws and rules.
That's a lot of money though, if they answer, a lot of some people, the older people.
But the the other thing, the other thing that Tiffany had said was.
No, no, I'm saying that. The reason the big numbers, because that's where the average check from year eight, social security ends up, like thirty-five thousand.
It's, it's not guaranteed based on age, it's, they have to actually apply every year for me.
So, yes, yes.
So, I mean, not that.
And there's ten, ten properties that still have not filled out their paperwork, or there was that a couple days ago.
Not that, not that I'm saying, you know, elderly people forget all the time, but and that we can bank on something of that.
Oh, there's things going on.
But, right.
What are you trying to say, bro?
Well, you miss a deadline with this, you miss a dead, a deadline, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's.
Yeah. Um, so I guess, so are are we all good with the fifty percent exa- exemption percentage?
I am.
Yeah.
Okay, I am too, uh, where do you guys fall on leaving the number where it is now, which we can do, or changing it to any of these possibilities?
I'm, I mean, like I said, I'm more in favor of. I guess either the thirty or the forty at this point, um.
What if we did thirty this year and forty next?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I, I think we should reav, you know, reevaluate, right, evaluate it next year, can we, we can do that, right?
But but again, that was.
I think so, yeah.
That was my thing, was I'm okay starting, starting lower than that if we're able to.
That's we gotta build into the local law.
Right.
Okay.
At least look at it every year and say, alright, we're in this position now, we've actually budgeted to a point to where. Alright, we have some more flexibility that we can maybe justify in doing the forty or.
Just, just so I understand, though, this has absolutely zero effect on the village budget, it just simply passes the cost along to the other homeowner.
Right.
But.
So it's it's a question of how much the public gonna tolerate when they all get there.
Well, the other, the other eleven hundred and seventy parcels or whatever, right?
And that's, and that's.
We're gonna, we're gonna absorb that.
We're gonna absorb that cost.
And that's, and that's why I, when we talk about the budget, it's more so. If we're gonna say, hey, you're gonna pay thirty dollars more per tax just on this part, but then you're also paying. A hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars more overall in taxes because we've also increased your taxes because we have to raise our budget and all the, that's.
Or we lower taxes or hold them where they are, we don't change the budget and then the number goes up.
Right.
Wait, you guys didn't change taxes, why the number go up?
Right.
And then you have to try to do your best to explain what's a very complicated.
Oh, it's it's confusing as hell.
Even without it, that can happen because the parcel values will change or parcels come off, then.
Sure. Well, look at what's happened in the last, say, three, four years of property valuations, right?
I think that's why the school and the town county are like, let's just do it all at once, take the heat off.
Yeah, but they don't have infrastructure.
That's true.
How many, there's a word for this call to this, how many other property cat exemptions are out there for like volunteer firemen? How much, because I I've seen that thing happening and squeezes smaller number all the time, so it's not just this.
Right.
Did you also have the star credit you have?
I'm I'm just asking, where's this on top of?
Star, the advanced star.
Yeah.
I don't, nothing that's inside our control. Like, we don't have any dish ones for us, but there are other ones out there, but it's the state or the county decides.
Stars, cool.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, like, like the cap, like, like you said, the for, like, first responders.
Oh, I can find it, I can find it.
Yep.
Get the tax break, yeah, and which, um, which, right, that doesn't affect. It does affect.
It affects the other people.
Right, affects the ones who aren't first responders, right? Gotta make up the difference.
Cause you chip away at it.
But they're volunteering to help us.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not questioning, oh, yeah.
Cause they're the seniors, we have to take care of our seniors, that's our responsibility.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yes, no, I agree, I totally agree, um, but again, I, you know. Um, you guys are the ones who are gonna be here in the future and you guys are the ones who are gonna have to describe this, so I don't wanna be like, let's give you forty thousand and you get to explain it. I that's why I wanna get out of here, you guys are.
But he's a whole new person now, I'm not gonna be here, I'm gonna be like.
I'm gonna skip away with the balloon.
So fifty dollars, fifty, that's on the average, you're saying?
On average, so if your property is lower than the average, it may be like ten dollars if you're more.
What would you guess the average is, who's a false buck forty?
What, for?
Average property value, average.
The assessed value? No, I'd probably say maybe buck sixty.
Yeah, assessed value. Buck sixty with the O's, okay.
I think so, that's a good question, I don't know, and you cannot, you can call Tiffany and ask her, she.
Yeah, I'm just curious with the average.
There are gonna be a lot more people who need more help coming in the next few years.
I mean, the other side of that is, if you're living on thirty thousand a year.
Well, well.
Yeah, I know.
And when, well, you gotta think about the the, this community, I bet you there's a lot of people living on thirty thousand, because.
And when.
It's tough.
They're 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 getting, they're getting section A housing, you know.
Oh, yeah, but I'm trying to be over sixty-five, so the idea is that your your work abilities are limited.
True. Oh, you're, no, no, they're dumb, yeah, they are, yeah.
No, you're 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 phasing out of the work, you're phasing out of the workforce, right, and then you're.
Hopefully, we're trying to live on thirty thousand, I don't.
Okay, so.
Well, well, probably they'll say we should go back to work.
Yeah, I know.
So you serve your father, go for it.
So overall, we are looking for a local law that we can adjust via lo- uh, resolution.
Kind of reassess it now, anyway.
Um, okay.
Yeah, circumstances change.
And we are, are we all in agreement that we wanna set the new number at thirty?
I'm sure, I know.
Cause that's, that's, it sounds like you were thirty, forty, you were thirty, no, you were thirty, someone, someone else said thirty.
I was in the middle.
You were in the mid, okay, where where are you guys all? Are we good with thirty, one sixty, twenty-five, where where?
No, I think it'd be thirty.
Thirty?
I think thirty.
Okay.
I can live with thirty, yeah.
Alright.
Like you said, you gotta take care of, I mean, I can't, like, I can't even fathom the idea of someone trying to live on that type of uh, income anyway.
Alright, so scheduling wise, we will have the local law ready, uh, for the regular meeting, but we'll have to have a special meeting. Um, before the end of the month to pass, to to have the public hearing and adopt it, should should that be our path?
By the way, just just for.
Sure.
Point of interest, uh, fifteen bucks an hour, actually the minimum wage, so maybe higher than that now, but fifteen bucks an hour times two thousand eighty hours a year, which is forty hours a week, is thirty one thousand two hundred. So basically, this is a senior living on what is a minimum wage salary.
Right, and, well, most seniors are living on their social security, you know.
Yeah, which basically minimum wage, right? Agree one, two, one.
Alright, so we have our plan forward, we don't need to move on it, um, that's all before we move into executive session, yes?
Also, but, let me just say one thing, when, when it gets presented, we, I think there, uh, some of it is gonna be in the presentation.
Sure.
There's, sometimes people are gonna like never want more taxes, no matter what.
Yeah.
But I think if we say, you know, this is gonna help our seniors and, you know, put the good stuff out there.
It's a good newsletter item, it's a good newsletter item.
Yeah.
And also, this isn't gonna happen in this, this current tax one, it's the twenty twenty second one.
Right.
So, yeah, alright, um, hearing none, do you have any other business before we move into executive?
Yeah, what was it, did we decide on thirty?
We decided on the thirty, fifty percent, and the ability to, uh, readjust, um, somehow, um, via resolution
Yeah, sure.
every, whatever year we decide, yeah, okay, um.
Yeah. Okay, alright. Yep.
The only thing I have, I wanna just make sure that the Ashley Drive residents get a letter this week.
We'll do that.
If we can, I mean, it's just, I, they're, I, I don't wanna, I mean, not that, I mean, not for nothing, but I mean, our guys did the best they could with what they had for resources.
Heroic.
Had to get, had to get, you know, Delaware engineering up there, uh, Robert, you know, was around, right?
It was, um.
Not Delaware, the engineer came up, uh.
Yeah.